Jeff Dents, do you want me to take roles since Rocco's not here?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I was gonna have Matt do it, but you can do it.
Okay, coming in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Supervisors Meeting for Monday, June 21st, 2021. We'll begin with the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Um, so this is our first hybrid meeting, and our last probably next month will be full live meeting back in the Township Building. Um, but we're gonna work through this hybrid. I mean, it's hard enough doing Zoom, so this is my first hybrid, but we're gonna do our best. Um, Mr. Brassi, can you call the role, please?
I got him. Mr. Dents?
Here.
Mr. Brassi's here. Mr. Galloway?
Yeah.
Palmer?
Here.
All right, Mr. Rocco is on vacation, so he won't be here. Before we go to our agenda tonight, we're gonna start with, um, uh, a resolution to hire Police Officer David Edmund. He was hired earlier this month, and we have to do it now. Mr., um, or Chief Whitney, do you want to take us through this? We hired him, and he was sworn in already, correct?
Actually, we're gonna swear him in tomorrow. Tomorrow will be his first day. Um, we gave him a conditional job offer. He's a police officer currently in the city of Philadelphia. He's been there for about a year and a half. And he was the, uh, last candidate left standing from the, uh, the last consortium test, not the most recent one that was given, but last year's. Uh, we're very happy with him. We think he's a great promising candidate, and we're happy to have him on board.
All right, and this is gonna be a resolution. Uh, Mr. Tequita, do you have resolution number?
It is 2021-16.
All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-16 hiring, um, Officer Edmund?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Officer Edmund.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Takes us to item number one on our agenda, public comment. Is there any public comment needed tonight?
We have one public comment coming in. Tony.
Is this live or on a phone call?
It'll be a phone call. It's Tony.
You there, Tony?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Hi.
Ready?
Yeah, ready when you are.
Okay, um, last meeting, I pressed nine to ask the question during the police chief, uh, but I guess it didn't register. So what I do want to know is, why are the police waiting for the coroner reports? Is the wait related to the conflict between the county commissioners and the coroner's office? That's the first question. I've got two more. Uh, it would be nice to either include the following in the monthly meeting or post on the website if possible. Uh, the one being the actual list of bills and amounts, so you can actually see them before they're brought up at the meeting. Um, the current amount in savings and checking, so we can see if maybe we want to cut back on some of those bills. And also the year-to-date totals of budget item compared to what is budgeted for them. So we can see how we're doing as a community and as a township with our budget. Uh, and the last thing I, I would like to know if there's any status on the water park, because it would be a nice addition to our community, and perhaps the company that's building all those nice things, uh, right now would like to help out with it, because they're expecting so many employees for their projects. And, you know, happy families are happy employees. That's all.
We're gonna go backwards. The water park thing is something that would have to be budgeted for, so that, we really haven't even discussed that. If that's something the board is inclined to discuss come budget season for next year, that was, would be something that we'd have to do. That's not something that's gonna happen this year, if it happens. Um, as for the bills and financials, um, I can talk to Mrs. Rukoff or Mr. Tequita can, and see what we could do to, I don't know if we can put it on the website, but we can try and, uh, figure something out, I'm sure. And then the first item was Chief Whitney. I'll defer to him.
Okay.
Yes, um, you know, I served in our detective unit from 1999 to 2013, and I can tell you, uh, you know, as a, as an investigator, that there is normally a lag, uh, between when an autopsy is conducted and when we get the final report. Most of that is due to the, uh, the amount of time it takes to get a toxicology report back from the lab. Uh, it's not necessarily that the testing takes a long time to accomplish, but there's always a wait, so you're waiting for your turn in line to get the bench chemist to do your testing. So the short answer, that was the long answer, the short answer is no, uh, that delay is not related to any issues taking place up in the county. That's a normal delay that has always been the case, working with the Bucks County Coroner's Office. It's just, it's part of the way it works.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it for now.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment needed? Anyone else for public comment?
That's all, that's it for public comment. No more public comment.
All right, that'll take us to item number two. North Point Falls Township Industrial LLC, Major Subdivision, 100 River Road. All right, I see Mr. McGinnis is in the room. You can take us from here.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, Guinness here from Begley Carlin. We're here for North Point with respect to what we've identified as lots three through eight with regard to the Keystone Trade Center. Um, this is a subdivision plan to essentially take the existing, uh, lease lines for the businesses where North Point is the, uh, lessor or landlord, and, uh, create new parcels to have essentially the property lines functionally, uh, mirror the lease lines. These parcels or proposed parcels are all presently improved, um, with existing, uh, businesses and structures. And we did a similar process, I would say the supervisors might recall, for what we labeled as Building One. Uh, we went to the zoning hearing board last month to receive a number of dimensional variances to facilitate the subdivision. Uh, the waivers, which we have listed, and which I'll briefly summarize in a minute, uh, pertain essentially to existing conditions on the properties, which we're requesting, uh, because there is no development proposed with the plan. Jeremy Michael is here on North Point's end, and I also have, I believe in the room, Greg Litzer and Eric Clay from Gilmore Associates, who can address any technical questions that the board might have. Uh, the waivers, which we've identified, again, which I'll touch on very briefly here, are waivers from Section 191, uh, 52.1C2. Uh, this is a deferral that we're requesting for natural resource protection calculations, uh, until or if the lots which we're here for are developed in the, uh, future, since there are no improvements shown with this iteration of the plan. The second waiver is a waiver from 19160A1, um, and this pertains really to the monuments on what we have called as Lot Three, and if it would be helpful, we can put up a, uh, a plan showing the different lots which we've identified. And really, this waiver is being requested because of the location of Lot Three vis a vis the Delaware River. We can't comply with that section. The third waiver is 191-79C3, uh, that's natural resource mapping waiver. And again, we're asking to defer this, uh, because there is no earth disturbance proposed with this subdivision. The fourth waiver, and, and I will, um, try to summarize this very briefly, is 19143B. Um, this is technically a waiver because there is a, uh, provision in your subdivision and land development ordinance that requires a developer to comply with your zoning ordinance. It cross-references the zoning ordinance. We do comply with the zoning ordinance, and for the areas that we didn't comply, we receive variances. So, um, I think we actually comply with this, but very, uh, belt and suspenders, to be conservative, were requesting a waiver since we did receive a number of dimensional variances last month at the zoning hearing board. So that's all that waiver pertains to. And then the last section is 19136D, and that only relates to, uh, driveways on two of the lots, uh, vis a vis property lines. These are existing conditions, uh, with improvements, and we can't really shift the property lines with these lots, uh, so we're asking for a waiver. The two other notes that I would make that I know were, um, discussed at the planning commission and came up in, um, Mr. Jones's review letter pertain to the installation of sidewalks and street trees. Uh, again, the board is very familiar with this, but as we move forward with the development process and are submitting land development plans for various lots that are either in existence or lots that we're creating, we're going to go through and be installing the sidewalks and planting the trees. Um, this is just a subdivision with no construction that's anticipated, uh, in the short term at least. So if and when we come back in front of the board for any land development phase of the project, there will be the associated sidewalks and street trees. So that's not a waiver request, that's just a deferral to the land development. Uh, the other item that I would highlight is there's a comment in Mr. Jones's letter. This was also discussed at the planning commission for 19143A, um, about an unbuildable area on Lot Four. Um, Greg or, or Eric or Jeremy can get into this more. There's an electrical substation and transmission line, uh, which is present on the lot. Uh, the area is unbuildable due to the existing infrastructure, regardless of how that's allocated. So we don't have that, uh, listed as a, a, a waiver, but I wanted to provide, uh, additional clarity, so the board, uh, understood what that comment stemmed from. Uh, other than that, everything else in the letter is a, uh, will comply. And, uh, I noted, I think last time we were in front of the board, that this, uh, has no impact on North Point's intentions to remain the, um, the landholder and owner of these lots. It's just to create a situation for, uh, cleanliness of, uh, allocating, um, space so that the actual property lines corresponded to the existing lease areas, which are already in existence. So, uh, that's a, uh, a brief summary on my end. We're certainly happy to get into any more detail and to address any technical, uh, questions that the board has.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, you have any comments or concerns?
No concerns, no comments.
Right, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No, uh, nothing at this time.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
All right, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, Mr. Tequita, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Tequita just stepped out of the room.
Oh, okay. And you have nothing to add, right, Mr. Clark?
No, everything seems in order.
All right, so this is Resolution Number 2021 hyphen 17. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, congratulations. Again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That takes us to item number three, Tyburn Road Associates Preliminary and Final Land Development, 418 Tyburn Road.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. This is Kelly McGowan representing the applicant.
All right, hello. We're ready when you are, I think, as long as everyone's here, right?
Great, and, uh, with me, uh, joining me is, uh, Kevin Wolfe this evening from Anderson Engineers. Uh, the engineering firm who prepared the plans that are the subject of the application. This is a, uh, commercial expansion for a property located at 418 Tyburn Road, has presently, uh, been used for some time as an electrical contracting use. The applicant is proposing an expansion of 5,000 square feet of warehouse together with a connecting portion of the building in order to continue that, uh, contracting use on the property. This plan did go before your zoning hearing board, uh, and received relief from, uh, certain dimensional requirements of the ordinance, requirements of your zoning ordinance. The, uh, property is undersized, uh, which was, uh, the need for some of the relief, which included an increase in impervious surface, uh, from 53% from the permitted 50%. Um, a requirement or from the requirement that curbing be provided within, uh, the parking areas, that's to facilitate stormwater management, and then also from the lighting requirements of your zoning ordinance. Uh, those requirements are in large measure duplicated in your subdivision and land development ordinance, which leads to the waivers that are requested this evening. Uh, I note the following waivers, uh, from subdivision ordinance to facilitate this development, which is from Section 19136, requesting a waiver not to provide curbing along all driveways. Again, mirrors the zoning hearing board decision from Section 19137B. Similar, uh, requirement from curbing along parking areas from Sections 19137E, 37G1, 37G2, and 37G4, those sections of the ordinance, again, with respect to curbing within those interior parking areas. I do note for the board, the parking is proposed to be expanded, and 10 additional parking spaces will be added, uh, to facilitate the expansion. And finally, um, the waiver from Section 191-38A and 38B, and that is to not provide the lighting improvements within the parking areas. This is a private facility, uh, and we have requested, um, the waiver from that section. Uh, otherwise, there are two waivers also, uh, required or requested from your stormwater management ordinance. They are from the dimensional and structural requirements for the detention basins. Uh, the applicant is proposing additional stormwater basin in connection with the development. That section is 187-12E, 12I, and 12L. And then the second, uh, set of waivers for the stormwater management is from Section 18713B1 and 13B5, and that's from dimensional requirements of stormwater facility pipes, again, set forth in those sections of the ordinance. Uh, the township engineer has reviewed our stormwater management report, which was provided with the preliminary final land development plans. Uh, in all other respects, uh, the letter issued, uh, by Jones Engineering is a will comply letter, and the applicant agrees, uh, to comply with the remaining comments, including outside agency approvals. Uh, that is my summary. If the board has any specific questions relating to the development, Kevin or I would be happy to answer them.
All right, any questions for Mrs. McGowan or Mr. Anderson from Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. Uh, uh, Mr. Jones, uh, why do we, um, have, uh, these ordinances in place, uh, for parking areas, curb-in, and lighting? Uh, I know it was addressed that it's for stormwater management, but is it for life safety also? Possibly, uh, vehicles, uh, popping curbs and running people over, and, uh, I'm not sure why it's a waiver.
Right, uh, we've issued waivers in the past, um, when the curbing isn't required for channelizing and directing stormwater flow to an inlet. So I'd say the curbing is something that the board has waived in times past, and in this case, uh, the curb, um, would prevent the, um, sheet flow drainage that they proposed. So I don't see any issues with that, and I believe the lighting, um, was, um, was agreed to by the planning commission, because the applicant indicated that it's a daytime-only operation. I'll let the applicant's attorney confirm that.
Mr. Jones, that, that is correct. The business hours are regular business hours.
I'm sure there'd be some sort of safety lighting proposed for the, for the buildings themselves, for the police and fire.
There is, in the building code, uh, you know, in connection with that development, uh, the applicant will comply with those building code requirements and safety requirements.
Mr. Palmer, I'm not sure if I answered your question directly, but feel free to follow up.
No, I, 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 if, if you're happy with it, I just, none of the deeds are in place for a reason, and it's pretty much they, uh, did away with all the curb-in and, uh, parking lot lighting. And I know in the winter months, it's dark. I don't know what time they start their, uh, their shift in the morning. If it's five o'clock in the morning, the sun doesn't come up till eight, so. Uh, and if they're building a bigger building, they're gonna have more associates coming into their parking lot, so. Uh, I'm not a big fan about the lighting, but, uh, the curb-in, if, if you feel that it's, it's okay, but, um, I'm not sure about the lighting with it. Those additional cars that are in the park lots.
And, and Mr. Palmer, if I may just expand on that briefly, this is not a waiver, um, to eliminate any lighting of the site or all of the lighting is, it is, um, more of a modification of the more technical requirements of your ordinance that apply to all of these commercial uses, you know, including a shopping center parking lot, things like that. Um, so that the, um, applicant will ensure that the property is adequately lighted for its employees' use.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no, that, that answers everything for me. Thank you.
Mr. Brassi?
No, thanks. I have nothing.
Uh, Mr. Jones, is there anything else for you to add?
No, I would only, uh, well, I would add one, um, asterisk point to the stormwater waivers, that they're, um, subject to the applicant complying with the pipe material that we specified in terms of the size and the cover and the geotechnical consultant that we'll have on site when we're building the berms that are narrower than, um, than the ordinance standard, and I would just ask the applicant's attorney to concur with that.
That, that is agreeable.
All right, Mr. Tequita, do you have anything?
No comments.
Mr. Clark?
No, again, everything seems in order.
All right, and this will be Resolution 2021-18?
Correct.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Who was it? You were a no, Mr. Palmer?
No, I, I'm in favor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, all right, congratulations. That was easy.
Remember, thank you for your time.
Yep. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know there was no public comment for that item.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. Good thing.
There was no public.
All right, item number four, consider notice of intent to award a bid for the Falls Township Community Park Hockey Rink Improvement Project. This went at the bid, Mr. Jones, already once, and is that correct?
That's correct, and, and we recommended rejecting the bids due to a budgeting issue. Uh, we, we altered the scope and, and asked Public Works to join with us to do some of the work, opened up bids on June 17th, um, and had three bidders this time, um, and we got the number. It's not much of a decrease, but it's enough of a decrease to fit within the overall budget, um, considering the grant funds, and I'll ask the manager to confirm that, but we're comfortable that we can deliver the project with the budget as we understand it with this low bid at 96,539.63 by General Assfall.
And we're familiar with your work, obviously.
Yeah, they bid it the first time. They, you know, they've been out there a couple of times during the process, asking us questions, so they're familiar. Um, the numbers weren't too far apart. We didn't see any irregularities. Uh, we're comfortable with that company. Um, they're low again. And so we're asking the board to authorize us to issue a notice of intent to award, and as you know, uh, that will start a 30-day responsible contract. The review period is typical, and so the project would be able to start theoretically, um, I guess it would be late July.
All right, and how much do you budget for this, Mr. Tequita? Do you know offhand?
Uh, uh, I've had, I do not know how much we budgeted. There was a grant awarded, um, and Mr. Jones is correct. This would be the, uh, with this new bid, it would be within the budgeted amount.
Okay. Um, any, um, questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Tequita from board members? Mr. Palmer?
I'm glad that, um, General Assfall came in pretty good there, so, uh, we're comfortable with their work.
Mr. McGowan?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
All right, now you have no questions. Is there any public comment needed?
A comment.
No public comment, you said?
No public comment.
All right, Mr. Tequita, do you have anything to add?
Yes, yeah, if you're going to consider adopting this or approving this, uh, it would need to be subject to review by the solicitors, uh, all the bid documents to be reviewed by the solicitors' office.
All right, Mr. Clark, is that all right?
Yes, and we discussed that with Mr. Tequita earlier, and we're recommending that.
All right, and if everyone's all right with that, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I can do motion, please.
All right, motion made and seconded. Um, Mr. Brassi, can you poll the board, please?
Sure, Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Um, Jeff Perezki, yes. Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. New hockey rink, that should be nice. Item number five, consider awarding bid for provisions for cleaning services for Falls Township Municipal Building and various parks. Mr. Tequita, do you want to take this one?
Yes.
See what this is?
On May 24th, uh, the township opened sealed bids for cleaning services for the township administrative building and the various parks we have. Uh, we had three bids, two came in defective. Uh, the one bid that did come in was for CNS Cleaning Company. They're the company we are currently using and had used through a portion of the pandemic, pandemic. Based on these bid results, uh, we are, uh, requesting that the board consider CNS Cleaning Company, uh, as a qualified bidder uh, at $37,712 as the total bid number.
All right, any questions or comments from Mr. Tequita from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
All right, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, Mr. Tequita, um, $37,712, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Brassi, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Jeff Perezki, yes. Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number six, consider agreement between Falls Township and 350 Chelsea Road regarding tree removal to access the Three Arches property. Um, can you take us through this one, Mr. Tequita?
Uh, this, uh, agreement is for the park runners on 350 Chelsea Place, uh, to you, make use of the Three Arches parking lot and yard area for the purpose of accessing the rear of their property to remove two trees, uh, at the, their, that, that property in our sole cost and expense. They just need access, uh, to our property for that.
I misunderstood what this was then. That's pretty straightforward. They're just gonna use Three Arches to access their property and cut down trees.
Correct.
All right, is there any questions on this one? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Brassi?
Uh, no questions. I'm glad we cleared it up. I was gonna confuse myself what was happening, but it totally makes sense now. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I have no questions now. I had a bunch, but I was mistaken. Um, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make that.
Comment needed, I'm sorry.
There's no public comment. No public.
All right, now I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Brassi, can you poll the board?
Sure, Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Jeff Perezki, yes. Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, item number seven, consider agreement between Falls Township and Mid-Atlantic Event Group to conduct drive-in movies and in-person concerts at the Falls Township Unit, Community Park. I believe this is something we started last year that was very successful and popular. Um, they're showing movies. I think they do them once a week, if not more, and concerts as well. Um, are there any questions for, uh, from board members, from Mr. Tequita or Mr. Andrews, I believe is still here? Mr. Palmer?
Andrews is coming in.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
Um, I have just a few, I guess, to, is this, did we have an agreement with Mid-Atlantic Event Group in the past? And I guess if we didn't, um, why the change and what am I looking at?
Well, we did, I, I guess I can share that. We did have an agreement last year, uh, to run these drive-in movies. Um, essentially, last year, they agreed to cover costs of staffing and, you know, any, any expenses like quartet potties and stuff like that. It was just, last year was about getting people out, having something fun to do, you know, in the throes of the pandemic. Um, and we're just wanting to continue that and, you know, add some concerts. You know, in the throes of the pandemic. Um, and we're just going to continue that and you add some concerts to it this year, and the township. Is uh, slated to generate some revenue on these this year, we, unlike last year.
So the agreement's in place more so, um, so we know who's paying for what.
Correct.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Well.
Um, anything to add, Ms. Gallagher or Mr. Clark?
One of the other things that the agreement does is it requires the vendor to obtain any licensing rights for movies or music that's, that's at the events. Um, which can be a difficult process, so this puts that burden on them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to approve this agreement between Falls Township and the Mid-Atlantic Group?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? None? All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Item number eight, consider resolution extending guidelines and policy for outdoor sales of food and merchandise of existing businesses in the township during the. Coronavirus pandemic. Um. Mr. Tequila, what exactly we have here, or Ms. Gallagher, whichever one wants to take this?
On uh. On, on June, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution temporarily authorizing outdoor dining. The board is being asked to consider uh, extending this provision until August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, this is pretty straightforward as well. Um, I know that the LCD pulled the plug on the alcohol sales outdoors, so this has, you know, we have no authority over that. We have no regulation over that. All we're doing is allowing outdoor dining to continue, uh, which is nice enough for me. Um, what resolution, this says resolution number eighteen, but I think we're past eighteen, are we not?
Correct, this is resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members, Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Boraski?
Um, I was just gonna question if someone knew when Labor Day was. Is that the thirtieth or? August, August, or is it September?
Labor Day does uh, fall in September. Uh, the reason that we selected August for the end date was because of the. Ordinance that is in front of you in item number thirteen, which we do anticipate will be imposed prior to the August date.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, so we have resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen extending the outdoor dining. We have a motion.
I make that motion.
Sorry.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? None? All right. Item number nine. Consider adopting ordinance amending chapter two oh three, parking regulations amending section twenty-two. Parking prohibited at all times. Chief Whitney, you want to take this one?
Sure. So we recommend temporary no parking signs in that, in these areas, Cedar Lane and Lincoln Circle. To address uh, parking complaints that we received. And uh, wrecking those signs in those areas appears to have solved the problem, so this is allowing us to sustain that going forward.
Um. All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions for Chief Whitney from board members, Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Boraski?
No.
I have none. Um, so what ordinance number would this be?
Twenty.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash seven.
Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seven restricting parking?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Right, any opposed? None? All right, thank you. Item number ten.
There was no public comment on this.
Um, I apologize again, thank you. Consider adopting ordinance amending chapter one fifty-three massage establishments. We discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. Mr. Chief Whitney, do you want to talk about this again, please, real quick?
Yes, yeah, we did talk about this in a prior meeting, so this ordinance would allow us to both detect activity. Uh, if human trafficking criminal activity was taking place in Falls Township and also allow us to basically discourage. Any business coming into Falls Township to engage in any type of human trafficking activity.
All right, it's pretty straightforward. Is there any questions from board members, Mr. Palmer?
No, I had all my questions answered the last.
Mr. Galloway?
No question.
Mr. Boraski, is there any public comment needed?
Public comment, no public comment.
All right, and I'm sorry, I cut you short, Mr. Boraski, you, you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. This will be ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eight, correct?
Correct.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you.
Item number eleven, consider adopting ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine, planning commission at section sixty-nine dash one. Commission established membership, amending chapter two and nine, article eight zoning hearing board at section two and nine fifty-nine. Establishment and membership. We're basically expanding these boards, is that correct, Ms. Gallagher?
Yes, um, we are, are changing some of the provisions to allow for um, an alternate appointment to the planning commission. And uh, to change the membership of the zoning hearing board.
Changing hell.
So, um, if you look at exhibit B on the um, on the ordinance, uh, section B is the added section. Um, so it allows the uh, the township to appoint at least one, but no more than three residents to serve as alternate members of the zoning hearing board. And then the term of office of the alternate member shall be three years. Um, and then consistent with the municipality planning code, they're not, they're not permitted to cert, hold any other office with the township or be employees of the township.
That only applies to the um, alternates or everyone on the board?
That applies to everybody, but the, the term of, of the uh, alternates being three years is, is uh. Is different than the, the full members.
Okay, and that's the same for the zoning hearing board?
That, I'm sorry, that is the portion for the zoning hearing board. For the planning commission. Um, again, this allows the uh, the board to appoint um, up to three residents as alternate members. And the term of office there is going to be four years, um, and that the difference there is due to differences in the municipality's planning code. And there is no, there's no restriction as far as, there, there's not as restrictive as far as what offices the, the planning commission members can also hold.
All right, a lot of confusing lawyer talk there. Are there any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Chief Palmer, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Boraski?
Um, no, but I appreciate you clearing up, Lauren. I, I like the fact that there's um, the possibility for three alternates, because the planning commission, um, sometimes we have. We run into issues where we, we may actually need three alternates, so it's nice to know. So three alternates at the same time could be appointed.
All right, and for everyone at home, we're basically expanding these boards so that, you know, we don't come up shorthanded. Um, is there a public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, and this will be ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash nine, is that correct, Mr. Tequila?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
But item number twelve has been pulled. We're not going to. Skipping number twelve tonight, so that takes us to item number thirteen. Consider authorization for advertisement for ordinance amending chapter two oh nine zoning at section, at section twenty-three. Highway Commercial District subsection D, conditional uses permitted and subsection E. Accessory buildings, uses and structures permitted in section thirty-two. Dot four Riverfront District at section E, accessory buildings, uses and structures in all sectors. To repeal subsection three accessory outdoor dining and create section forty-eight dash three outdoor dining. Uh, who wants to take this one, Mr. Tequila or Ms. Gallagher?
So what this ordinance will do is um, centralize all of the regulations related to outdoor dining and um, enact some permanent regulations. Uh, consistent with the resolution that we considered earlier. Um, certain things were um, experimented with during the pandemic that. Um, working with uh, Mr. Tequila, we put together this ordinance. Essentially, what it will do is it's going to permit outdoor dining by right as an accessory use in NC, HC and SC districts. And it'll continue to be permitted by conditional use in the R two, RD two district. Currently, there are specific standards that are listed in the R two, RD two district. Um, but we pulled those standards out, updated them, included some new language from the resolution for things that worked well. Um, and we put them in a separate section in the code, which will be the new section forty-eight point three. So that all of the section, all of the districts that uh, allow outdoor dining will now refer to that separate section for the specific regulations for that.
Um, any questions from members, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, one feedback I've been getting from a lot of residents is they really enjoy dining outside and uh. I think making this a permanent fixture is great for our community, and I support it.
Mr. Galloway?
No, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Boraski?
I don't have any questions now. This is the first time I'm reading through it, so I'm sure I will, and I'll, I'll email the solicitor staff. Thanks.
Me as well. Um, so they're still going to need zoning relief for the outdoor dining, and they're starting to comply with parking requirements?
So.
If their outdoor dining takes away some of their parking, what are you going to do in that situation?
So the, this ordinance would not allow them to continue to use parking spaces to accommodate the outdoor dining. If they have sufficient parking otherwise on the, um, on the property, then I, I suppose they could. Uh, convert some of that on a more permanent basis, um, but it does allow for a by right use. As long as they comply with all of the things set forth in the, that separate section. Um, one of the things that uh, Matt and I were looking at was um, safety concerns regarding the proximity of this. Um, outdoor dining use to other parking areas, driveways, driveways and uh, major roads. Um, so that was some, one of the things that we were looking at as we put this together. Um, I don't know if, I, I don't believe that this ordinance would allow that kind of floating outdoor dining use in the middle of a parking lot. Um, but it would have to, you know, in order to do something like that, they would probably need, need some sort of zoning relief, and they would still have to be able to meet all the parking requirements for the. Restaurant use plus the additional dining use, because now the restaurants are open back up to a hundred percent capacity.
Okay. So they can't use, like, a lot of the places are using parking spaces for dining area now. That's not going to fly with this ordinance.
Correct. Correct.
But if they have space where they can have outdoor dining without using parking spaces, then they're good to go.
Right, and that would include a sidewalk that's in front of the building.
All right. What about a dirt lot out back? That's fine, too?
Yep, as long as they comply with all the other uh, restrictions, and there are, there are restrictions regarding distance to residential districts and residential uses. Um, in order to, to keep the noise levels down.
Okay, and again, this doesn't include alcohol, because that's not something we approve or regulate.
Right, we specifically were um, included language that requires them to obtain any approvals necessary from the Liquor Control Board and the Bucks County Board of Health.
All right, any, like, uh, public comment needed on this?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to advertise this ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, a motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, item fourteen is the minutes from May seventeen. Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Poole, and I know it's tough doing it this way. This hybrid thing is probably even harder. Hopefully next month, we're back to a normal in-person meeting. Um, there's no reason why we won't be. At least the board will be there. It may still be hybrid for the public. And professionals if needed. Any uh. Corrections or comments on the minutes from board members?
No.
None?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, Mr. Jones, that takes us to the engineers report. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the engineer's report for the month of May showed that we had one new residential earth disturbance application submitted. Um, one twenty-nine Hedrow Drive, it was for a residential pool. Uh, no other applications submitted in May. As usual, our highlights are in red, um, where we give you updates, um, in terms of the ongoing land development projects. I'll mention that MM Metals is operating under a TCO, uh, while they work on the interior of the second building. Um, Al Rose Steel, uh, site work is kind of on hold while they're working on the structural framing. Um, the, the KF Ellis Hills project, that's the Wow Wow and Lincoln Highway, will be before the Board of Supervisors in July. As you'll recall, they had a drive-through component that was removed, reverted back to the original plans, and they're in the process of making. Plan revisions to clean up a lot of the technical comments, but that will be before this board uh, next month. Um, the other two projects occurred tonight, and the North Point Phase One Building Two and Phase One Building Three. Will be before the planning commission tomorrow, meaning for consideration of land development improvement. Uh, the earth disturbances, uh, make this simple, the middle column, um, they're all completed, substantially completed with the need for. Uh, one final inspection for vegetation, and they'll be complete and done and off the report. On the right-hand column, all of those highlighted residential pools, as well as Snipes Farm, have been reviewed and earth disturbance permits issued. Um, so they'll all start construction very soon, with the exception of item number thirty-five, um, that pool is in need of a couple of zoning variances. So, uh, they're working on those. In terms of the ongoing township projects, uh, the only highlights are on the road programs. Um, for two thousand and twenty, as you'll recall, Hedrow Woods is substantially complete, the work in Lindsad. Um, with the, what's left is the uh, final wearing course pavement and the mill and overlay of the whole lane. Um, that's going to happen on June twenty-eighth, the week of June twenty-eighth. Um, and right now the contractor is focused in that uh, Burgess Manor section, um, where we're making good progress. We expect the job to wrap up by late July. Terms of the twenty-one twenty-three road program, that is Elderberry Drive and some known overlay scope. Um, contractor, responsible contractor determination was submitted. Uh, it's general asphalt, they, they meet that, um, and we're ready to finalize the contract and get started. They're actually intending to start the known overlay scope of work tomorrow and later on this week. And we expect full reconstruction of Elderberry Drive to follow the week after. Um, in the meantime, we're reviewing submittals and shop drawings, as well as working on the Pinewood Drive scope for next year's construction. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Jones from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
Mr. Boraski?
No questions.
All right, I know, um, I received a few phone calls from. Residents regarding a road program, and you know I'm talking about this, the down there in Burgess Manor.
Yes.
Um.
Yep, we're working through those issues with them. We, we instituted a curb and gutter combination, because there's a lot of roads back there that are very flat. And so that fixes the gutter line and, and helps with gutter flow when you're below a half a percent grade. So engineering language. Um, it's a big difference from what they're used to. Um, so we realized that in Dacu and West Burgess. Um, the slopes aren't as bad, and the residents, you, you say that they didn't have many drainage problems. They're all isolated down at the end of West Burgess, so. We're evaluating the necessity for the curb and gutter, which was the subject of the complaint. And we believe that we can remove it. Um, not much of it has been constructed. Um, so we're still working on that decision as to whether to pull it all out. Or redo some of it in front of that one neighbor's house, um, to make it more palatable to them. So we intend to make that decision very soon, and, and we're leaning towards just removing that from that section. And leaving it in the other section where it's more required.
All right, thank you, but you're going to make everybody happy, I know, is the bottom line.
You're going to make everybody happy.
All right. Um. No other questions for Mr. Jones? Is there a public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to accept the engineer's report as presented?
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye? Takes us to the bill list. We have a bill list in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and nineteen cents. Just about one point two five million of that is payroll. We're a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a road program, a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for insurance. Any, um. Comments or questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Uh, Boraski?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second that motion.
Motion made in second, Mr. Boraski, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Jeff Perezki, yes. Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Clark, do you want to comment on our executive session, please?
Yes, Mr. Dents, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss.
Yes, Mr. Dents, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss matters of personnel and potential litigation.
All right, that takes us to the police report. Chief Whitney, you're up.
Thank you. I don't have dogs, so that's not me.
On your canine?
I, I have no dogs, I have children, but no dogs. All right, so the monthly report, looking back at the month of May, uh, twenty-three out of the sixty-two shifts in the patrol division staffing was at or below minimum staffing for at least part of the shift. That's forty-two percent of the time, uh, that's down from fifty-five percent in April, and if you look at uh, the last four years, you know, forty-two percent, uh, two out of the last four years, we were, that, we were a little above that, forty-three and a half. Uh, last year, we were just at the beginning of the pandemic, so nobody was taken off work, uh, so, you know, we were at a much lower uh, level, uh, for minimum staffing at that month, so this is kind of, I would say, average for May with our current deployment. That's the breakdown per squad, uh, you know, uh, twenty-four, seven, twelve-hour shift operation, uh, there are two groups, uh, in order to cover the seven-day week. So that's why you have group A and group B days and nights. And again, you know, uh, our ability to sustain proactive efforts, uh, is all about staffing level. You know, when we're minimum staffing, we're essentially running, uh, most of the time from call to call. Uh, when we're above minimum staffing, that's when we can get creative and address issues proactively before they become a problem. Our drug overdoses, uh, here for the last three months, in the month of May, we had, uh, three overdoses. We're up to twenty-eight, uh, for the year. Uh, we do have some pending fatal overdoses, once we get those reports in from the coroner's office, that, that fatality number will go up. Calls for service, so eighteen hundred and thirty-one calls for service in May, May was a busy month. Um, that's the breakdown, uh, by sector. We had two hundred and thirty-three medical calls. Busy month, all the way around. Traffic crashes, a hundred and eight, uh, in May. Uh, sixty-four of which were reportable, which means the car either had to be towed or somebody was injured, so that's a pretty high number. Arrests, seventy-two, uh, total arrests, uh, forty-four of which were drug arrests. So you can see that, um, you know, out of the arrests that we make, there's a sizable portion that are drug-related and that's, uh, of course, because drugs and traffic crashes kill people in Falls Township, so that's a priority for the police department to address that. And our motel and hotel breakdown, so the red roof is still a huge problem. Um, some of the other hotels and motels have kind of righted themselves. You know, the Residence Inn has been doing a, a good job, um, in addressing, you know, the issues that they had there. Now, of course, we're into sesame season, uh, so we have people coming in from out of town to vacation and, uh, you know, my hope is at some point we'll have more success with the red roof, uh, but thus far, uh, we haven't. We're still trying, we try to work with management there, uh, but we get, uh, varying degrees of cooperation. And other incidents, okay, back on, uh, June first, we had that bear incident where we had a bear wandering around uh, over By Commons Falls in that wooded area. That bear was captured uninjured by the game commission. Also, that day, we had a human trafficking case in town. Uh, just, just to kind of make you aware that, you know, we, we do have that kind of thing happening in our community. On the, uh, thirteenth of June, we had a traffic pursuit with motorcycle on Route thirteen. Uh, we called off the pursuit, which is not uncommon, uh, if, if, if the person we're chasing uh, starts driving, uh, in a way that we think is, it's going to be more dangerous to try to catch them than let them go, then we'll terminate the pursuit, that's our policy. Um, on the eighteenth, uh, we had a gun displayed during a road rage incident at Pep Boys, uh, not, not at Pep Boys, but in the area. Uh, the suspect was identified as a felon who was not permitted to legally possess a firearm. He was also a suspect in a prior shooting investigation that we had in, in our township. Uh, we used our SWAT team, uh, for a high-risk search warrant execution. It was, uh, the warrants were executed without any drama and a loaded firearm was recovered and the person was arrested. And that seemed to be a theme across the weekend because the next day we had a, um, another motorist dispute, uh, at the Wawa on West Trenton Avenue, another felon not to possess a loaded firearm was recovered and an arrest was made. And, uh, the eighteenth was a busy day, uh, to backtrack for a minute, we had, uh, two subjects, one of which escaped uh, for several hours from a telly town officer, we were all involved in kind of the search to try to provide assistance, uh, they had two people detained who were suspects in catalytic converter thefts. Uh, you may have noticed I stopped giving you information on those catalytic converter thefts because it would just be slide after slide after slide, we've had dozens and dozens of them. Um, it's been a real problem, uh, both in Falls Township and in the area here in Bucks County. Um, both of these people, uh, eventually we caught the guy who escaped, both of them were suspects in cases from our town. Uh, we've taken DNA from them for comparison to crime scene evidence, so once we get the results back from the lab, hopefully we'll close some of those cases. And hopefully this will slow down some of our catalytic converter thefts. And I just kind of as, as a piece of information here, uh, violence, violent crime nationwide has been up. There was a thirty-three percent increase, uh, across the United States in homicides in two thousand and twenty. There, there was a three-month period this year where the, uh, number of, of mass shootings uh, was the highest in any three-month, uh, period since nineteen sixty-six. Uh, traffic deaths were up, uh, at the highest rate in twenty twenty, uh, since two thousand and seven. I mean, just everywhere you look, you know, violent crime is up. Uh, in the first five months of this year, thirty-seven police officers were murdered. Uh, not traffic crashes and all the other stuff that happens to people in our profession, but actually murdered. Thirty-seven in five months, last year, the entire year, and last year was a pretty violent year, only forty-six were killed, uh, nationwide, uh, by homicide. So here's right across the river from us, eleven shootings in Trenton since the middle of last month. Uh, they had a murder on May fifteenth and then the rest of these states were all shooting hits, these are, aren't just shots fired, these are people that were hit uh, by gunfire and taken to the hospital for treatment. So it's right across the border, uh, we watch this all the time, every time there's a shooting, uh, in Trenton, I get an email from their fusion center. Uh, this is something that, uh, we keep a close eye on because of our close proximity to Trenton. So we watch these nationwide trends and we watch what's happening in, in Philadelphia and in Trenton to, um, to be prepared and always be, uh, looking for what's coming over the horizon at us. I kept this reminder in here because we had, uh, people running to different areas of the township, uh, trying lock door, uh, vehicle doors at night. Just a reminder for our citizens, please, uh, lock your vehicles, uh, please do not leave valuable things in vehicles. Uh, do not leave firearms in vehicles. Um, it, it's not responsible firearm ownership to leave a weapon in a car unless it's in a lock and a rack like what we have in our police cars, so please, uh, lock your cars and don't leave things in them that you don't want to be stolen. And please drive carefully, we continue to have serious traffic crashes. Uh, you know, I, I modified this slide from last month, uh, you know, excessive speed and reckless driving are definitely factors, but so are alcohol and drug use, we had a car, uh, you know, an overturned vehicle accident on a residential street uh, within the last month, uh, somebody who was drunk, you know, driving like a maniac down the street. Um, you, you can easily kill yourself or somebody else engaging in that kind of behavior. Uh, it is truly a tragedy for somebody to lose their life in a, in a car crash. And to keep you up to date on our Falls Township supporting recovery program, uh, twenty-two incidents were referred to our certified recovery specialists in May. Uh, contact was made with thirteen individuals, uh, one was successfully placed in treatment. And two people that we had contact with earlier this year that basically said they weren't interested uh, changed their mind and reached out and contacted our CRSs to express interest in being placed in treatment. Uh, so that program is going very well. Uh, we even had, uh, this month, our CRSs introduced themselves to our local district judge, uh, and there's a, um, there's a, a district court diversion program for drugs in Bucks County, uh, all the district, uh, magisterial district judge, judges participate in it. Uh, now our CRSs are kind of part of what, uh, magisterial district judge Vaslasky is doing, uh, to try to help people with substance use issues, so, um, very good program, it's going very well. And just to keep you on board, one of the things that we always, uh, work to improve our response to our people who struggle with mental illness, we have a tremendous amount of contact with people who are struggling with mental illness, both multiple contacts with individuals and, uh, contacts with multiple individuals. Um, for years now, we've been referring people to Lenape Valley's Mobile Crisis. Uh, mobile has been very useful to us in assisting these, these people and their families. A new organization kind of came on board, Access Services, they work with Mobile Crisis, uh, they have several programs, but one of which is designed to try to help people who've been unsuccessful up to this point, uh, in, in getting connected with services and succeeding. So we started using Access Services in the last month, uh, and we continue to refer people to them as a way to try to help individuals struggling with, uh, mental illness. The pandemic did not make it any easier on people, uh, and it certainly made people who were already struggling, uh, have a harder time. So that's a new program that we're doing here that doesn't cost us anything, which is, you know, they came to us and said, hey, it's a new service and we had them come in and do some roll call trainings, started using them immediately. And that's my report for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Chief Whitney, Ms. Bro- Brian Galloway?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, Mr. Palmer? Mr. Palmer? You're muted.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Boraski?
Uh, no questions, chief, very informative, thank you.
Yeah, I see the, uh, accidents and the speedings picking up again. And the arrests, it's getting a little hectic, I guess it's the warm weather, it doesn't help?
It doesn't help, you know, nationwide, cities are preparing for a violent summer. Uh, you know, we're a suburb, so, you know, we've been preparing for it as well, it's, keep our fingers crossed that, you know, people keep their heads on straight, but it's, uh, it's, it's concerning everybody.
Yeah, and, um, coming soon is fireworks, I know that's starting to become an issue, people.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, you know what, I should have put a slide up for that, I'll definitely have one, uh, in next month, but I should have had it in here to warn people, uh, listen, be advised, you know, we have an ordinance for, uh, fireworks, you're limited in what you could use. And we will be out there enforced, to enforce that ordinance, uh, it's not safe to have some of these fireworks in residential areas, so, uh, be prepared to be arrested and pay a fine.
All right, you've been warned, Falls Township, you heard them. Uh, I have one question, June first, you did confirm it was a bear that was captured, right? Because there was a rumor it was actually Rich Dipolito in the woods there.
You know, that was a separate incident, we probably should discuss that offline.
The bear was captured.
We did capture the bear.
All right, thank you very much. That, uh, takes us to manager comment, item nineteen.
I only have one item for the board tonight, um, just a reminder, uh, Tavo Properties, uh, the Mylars are ready for signature.
All right. That takes us to board comment. Mr. Uh, Galloway?
Uh, no comments tonight, thank.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
Mr. Boraski?
No comment, thank you, Mr. Dents.
All right, I'm just going to repeat again what Chief Whitney just said about fireworks, I know a lot of people love fireworks, there's a lot of people that don't like them, there's a lot of people that love them, just not in their backyard. You know, a lot of people's dogs and stuff are, get really, really upset about them. And, uh, like he said, there's a lot of ordinances, you know, you can own them in five in Pennsylvania, but it's really limited where you can use them, especially in Falls Township. So even in a parking lot, if there's an occupied building, and an occupied building doesn't mean that there's people currently in it. Um, you can't use them. And, uh, we have a long list here of, uh, letters of interest for boards and commissions. So I want to ask my fellow board members, and I know Mr. Rocco will probably watch this meeting at some point, if not, I'll call him this week. Uh, to please review them, and that, our next meeting, I'd like to start appointing people and fill a lot of these vacancies, I know we've been putting this on a back burner since COVID started. And that's all I have for tonight, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.